I will call the regular monthly meeting of the Rocky Mountain Town Council to order. Roll call, please, Rebecca.
Present this evening, Monday, December 14th, 2020, our Mayor, Stephen C. Angle, Vice Mayor, John W. Sneed, council members Bobby M. Kundif, J. Tyler Lee, Robert L. Moya, Mark H. Newbill, and Billy W. Stockton, and staff members, as noted.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance certified of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just before we go any further, obviously, under new restrictions imposed by the Governor, our meeting tonight and next month will be virtual, and we will adjust as need be according to the restrictions in place by the Governor. So, that being said, everybody received a copy of the agenda tonight. We do have a couple of things we need to amend. First, we need to take off and table the two resolutions under special items because of the virtual nature of our meeting, and those people cannot attend, so we'll put those off to a later date. And secondly, we need to add a closed session under Section 2.2, 3711A.1, discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment, et cetera, under the town manager's office. And we're doing this because the closed session came in our information but did not get out into public release, so we just want to make that change so it's there. Are there any other things that need to be changed in the agenda? There are here a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Go ahead, move.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Special items, we tabled those, and Mr. Irvin, you set an update on our clock at the farmer's market?
Yes, sir. After doing some aggressive pruning, it's quite attractive. In addition, two of the faces have been fixed and parts are on order to fix the remaining two. Mr. Schofield has unearthed a really good contact who is really helping him diagnose troubleshoot and repair the clock, so we've got 50% of it.
Good.
Great.
Good, yep. Sounds great.
All right. Next, we have no public hearing this evening, so move to approval of the draft minutes of November 9th, 2020, regular council meeting, and a November 18th special council meeting. Are there any corrections that need to be made to those draft minutes? So, motion to approve the draft minutes.
Come on in. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the draft minutes. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Next, approval of consent agenda. You see the information contained therein. Are there any questions concerning the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Come on in.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Next, under hearing of citizens, obviously, since we're virtual, there are no citizens to be heard. However, we did get comments from three individuals that will be made part of the record of tonight's meeting. Okay? Next, we'll move to old business. First, the December review of the fiscal year 2020 budget. Mr. Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we unfold into this agenda item, your finance director is on the other side of this phone, as well as your chief of police, because some of these budget changes are reflective of changes in their departments. Your public works director, Mr. Schofield, unfortunately, when we announced that this would be back to 10, in our prior way of doing 10, the department heads did not come, that he did not know we'd have them staffed in other rooms, so I'll be covering the public works implications. I've got a good write-up from him. In short, we had hoped that come December, we would be looking at a much better world, that we would be saying our draconian budget measures were a little extreme, and we can ease up. And it's not quite that rosy. Your finance director has done a budget reforecast, and a conservative estimate is, as you probably have, $150,000 of additional revenue that we did not account for. So if you don't make any changes between now and June 30th, the way you're currently trending, you'll end up with $150,000 of surplus revenue. Unfortunately, we have way more than $150,000 worth of need that we've put a hold on, and in terms of working with your departments, the following is how we propose that you use some of it, because you're going to find out at the end of this agenda item, we're largely proposing that you don't use it all, simply as a precaution against even further uncertain times. Your two biggest essential projects, other than the work we know we need to do on the municipal building, largely gutters and fascia, but we're working on a different estimate for that, are a bucket truck for the public works department, and a window project at the EMS building. The bucket truck in this agenda item is listed as 175. That is a typographical error. It's 115, so that middle seven should become a one. It's 115, and Mr. Schofield's capital request, and that's a state contract price. The price of the EMS windows is estimated to be $130,000 project. Again, that's going to be a complex project with some bidding, and that price may go up or down. We're far enough out from the EMS project that we could probably call that a FY 2022 project, which we'll be putting together in a few months. So if we proceed, hire an engineer, design the project, and we have to bid it out because of its price point, and then select a vendor, at that point, you're going to be in the April timeframe anyway, so you might as well make that a July 2021 project, and it can be included in next year's budget. So that really leaves the bucket truck as an essential item, and most likely, the asphalt roller, which they are currently renting. But that's not all. We've got some staffing issues that have really been pressing us lately. There are two areas. One is cost savings in your police department, and the other is adding a warm body to your finance department, and we'll cover each of those, and then when we get to the end, we'll talk about how we propose to use a portion of this revenue. The first item I'd like to cover is your police department's reorganization. I'll give the highlights, and then we'll get the chief on the phone, and he can expand on it, if you will. One of the criticisms we get in any department is when we need to hire part of management, or we need, you know, somebody that's in an upper tier, we go elsewhere. We've got that criticism a lot. Quite frankly, we try and grow our own talent. Mr. Atkins is doing a great job at the water plant. Mr. Burton is doing a fantastic job at the wastewater plant. Now that we have a lieutenant vacancy, a lot of folks have said, are we going to bring another outsider in? Well, the reality is, is one of the reasons we don't get a lot of folks interested in those positions internally is it's a huge jump going from a sergeant to a lieutenant, and that you become an exempt employee. And looking at how to solve that, and in talking to his staff, as why would you be reluctant to apply for this? His staff that are most qualified at stepping into those roles said, look, I've seen what happens to folks who trade the stripes and put on the bars. You know, once you become salaried exempt, you know, you work your tail off, you're no longer a boots-on-the-ground person, and there's just not a lot of interest in it. So, the chief has looked at other departments as to how they handle this problem, and he's come up with what I think is a very fantastic solution that actually saves money. What he's proposed is, is we eliminate those two lieutenant positions and create, in their place, first sergeant positions. Your existing lieutenant is retitled as captain, and that also allows us to eliminate the sergeant position in investigations. So you're not technically adding folks, and you're just totally, you're on the net reducing your salary requirements by $22,000. What he's given you in the packet is, if you scroll through it, is a proposed new org chart, and you'll see that it represents largely the net same number of warm bodies as you've had before, but in essence, it takes the lieutenant's positions and makes them what's called first sergeants. Therefore, they are not salaried exempt. They still have all of the benefits of police officers. We have individuals who are interested in competing for those positions internally. It takes your existing lieutenant, who is already a salaried exempt person, titles that person as captain, and the department moves on. On the whole, I think it's a great way to promote our local folks and hear their principal commands that, you know, they're not interested in making that leap, but they are interested in stepping up and doing more for the department. Chief, have you gotten on the phone?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Included with the write-up is a memo from your chief, as well as a proposed org chart. Again, in my estimation, this is largely a similar arrangement, and it gives our staff opportunities to compete for leadership positions without the penalty of converting them to a salaried exempt. And so this is the first part of our budget relook that I highly recommend. Not only is it a savings, but it allows us to promote from within. And the chief is here. If anybody has any questions, he can chime in and help out.
How many positions would be eliminated, sergeant positions?
This would be eliminating two lieutenants and one sergeant, because we wouldn't...
Be demoted.
Well, no. The one lieutenant's gone, and we would no longer have the sergeants in investigations, and then you would then repurpose or retitle your existing lieutenant to captain, your prior lieutenant to first sergeant, and your prior sergeant of investigations to first sergeant. So the math adds up the same.
So just reclassifying their jobs and positions, but not eliminating?
Correct. Two positions would be slightly downclassed. One position would be slightly upclassed to a net savings to the town.
I think we ought to wait on this until we get the new town manager in to get him to take a look at it and make a decision then.
You've got a ripe opportunity here in that you've got a lieutenant vacancy. If they move to get staffed, which they desperately need because they're shorthanded, then you're going to have people in incumbent positions. The reason this has come up is because they have that vacancy, and it's a time that they can do it. The chief is getting ready to advertise for the vacant lieutenant's position, and it's likely your lead talent have already signaled they're not particularly interested. What they are interested in is a similarly capacity position and apply for. But if we go down the road of advertising to get fully staffed, which we desperately need to do, these folks are exhausted. Every one of them's working way too much. Chief, I mean, am I reading this right? You've got a golden window here?
You are correct, sir. I believe it's a win-win for the town for pretty much $2,000 a month, and it would be a win for the guys who are looking to stay in the first sergeant area versus the lieutenant's position.
Now, what happens in April if and when we get a new town manager, and they want to potentially have more or less hands-on with the PD? Does this potentially change then, or...
Well, I mean, I wouldn't have brought this to you had Well, I mean, I wouldn't have brought this to you had it not arisen from the chief. I mean, it's his recommendation. I can't speak for who you may hire, but I assume who you hire would have the same working relationship in that they ask the chief to bring forward meaningful recommendations. To the extent those recommendations can be physically sustained and they sound logical, we bring them forward. I think your best gift to your next hire is a really functioning department. And honestly, I would like to see SBO to fill this vacancy with a local person. We've gone outside, we've gone outside our jurisdiction. We've done that. It's helped us get on track. It's helped us make some progress. But at this point, we've got some really great internal candidates, and I'd like to structure the positions such that it works for them. If you'd like to consider it another way, you're taking your two lieutenant's positions and simply making them first sergeants and taking them off of the salaried scale, which is no real change. You're taking your sergeants in investigations and moving that into captain, and you've already got an incumbent. We do have only one officer now, you know, who's really trying to cover both sides of the field. And we need warm bodies, so we, you know, regardless, they're going to have to move. I believe the chief is probably going to be your sole person on deck again this Christmas. You know, everybody that can's out working a shift with a vaccine on the horizon. Hopefully, that'll get better. But it's very likely they've got to go to market and advertise to fill this position. What I'd like is for them to advertise it in such a way that they can look at our local folks.
Why don't we, why don't we need a sergeant in investigations?
Well, if you have a first sergeant under investigations, that person will fill that role. You know, we've had a lieutenant of investigations and a sergeant, and what this does is combine that into one leadership role.
By waiting, that puts things out at least four months, if not longer. And is there a possibility we could lose people that were interested in those positions right now?
Well, if you go to advertise lieutenant, the chief feels that, having talked to the folks that are, you know, good candidates, they don't have a lot of interest. I mean, chief, you've sort of run this up the flagpole, I assume.
Yes, sir, I have. And this is why I presented this.
Yeah, we've gone to some of our internal folks who have the years, who have the capacity, who have the knowledge, skills, and drive, and the point-blank, they've said, I don't want to be an exempt employee. I don't want to be a lieutenant. If you can structure it to where I can step up and play a leadership role, I'd do it. But, you know, the poor lieutenant we have right now, we're working the spurs off him.
What's the disadvantages to doing it this way? I mean, we're getting rid of the lieutenant's positions. Why are they there in the first place?
Well, they are there because it's a classic differential rank between sergeant and captain. It's a place that they sit in between the chief. They perform command-grade work. First sergeant, you'll be able to get the same work out of them, but you'll have to realize if you work them 60 hours in a week, you're going to have to give them some time off, or you're going to have to compensate them. It's not an all-you-can-eat buffet as it is with, you know, myself or Mr. Moore or other folks that, you know, they're there till the job is done.
Right. In my business world, you know, there's a natural progression to move up the ladder. So how do these guys get to the chief of police?
Well, it's likely these folks would stop at first sergeant unless they really got the bug and decided they wanted to go on. Then the next one from there would be the captain's position, which, when Mr. Lovin retires, which is probably going to happen in the next, what do you think, chief, 48 months?
Five, six years. He just put a daughter into college, so yes.
I love department heads that borrow money or put kids in school. But big proposal, it's same number of people, it's a change in job title, it's a net savings. All it is, is instead of calling them lieutenants, we're calling them first sergeants.
So with this net savings, can we potentially add an officer with the savings? If our guys and gals are really being worked as hard as?
Yeah, if you go down the road, our problem is, is you recently added staff to the police department, and they'd probably be okay if they were fully staffed. Now, we've got, how many in the academy coming up, chief?
We've got two going to the academy, January the 4th.
Right, so we're-
And that's if the academy-
If they have an academy.
Right.
Right. Your chief and I think you've got enough positions right now. We simply need to get them filled, and the problem is, is if we were staffed to where COVID wasn't hurting us, we'd be way overstaffed.
And you're talking about the same amount of money, right? I mean, it's 42, 100.
Right. $22,000 less to do it.
$1,000 less than what we're paying now. I mean-
A no-brainer if it's less than what you're doing.
Really, you're not, we're not losing anything. I mean, we're getting that $22,000 as a saving, but we're not adding any additional money. You're just reclassifying the officers to a different position.
Right.
It's just basically a reclassification with no money change.
So do you, I mean, do you have to have a motion, or what do you need?
Well, let's cover the remaining items because, you know, we'd like council's guidance at the end of these items we're submitting, and we can always come back to the police department discussion. We'll go on to finance. And this was going to be challenging because, you know, we've got to put ourselves in their shoes. And when I have your finance, I have your finance director and, have your finance director. Boy, we're hitting the technology buttons today. Have your finance director, and I have your assistant finance director in the back, and they'll be able to chime in on this. We've really rolled out some amazing products in the finance department. They're doing things that they've never done before in terms of radio utility read. They're getting ready to stand up a customer interface to their utility system. We have all-digital timekeeping. We've rolled out a completely new general ledger and accounts payable system. And all of this stuff made great sense because it's really what the town needed in terms of ease of access, ease of reporting, and also migration off of a legacy AS400 system. So I don't, I have no issues with the direction they went, but the problem they found out is it's a massive amount of work, and the staff have been, in essence, running around and putting out fires since this happened, be it a utility meter swap-out project, be it a rollout project of new timekeeping system, of new time clocks where the time is automatically tracked to the departments. And so for the last six months, I've been talking with the finance director and the assistant finance director about, how can I help you? How can I, you know, prevent you from burning out and saying, no, that's, this isn't working. I'm going to go bag groceries or whatever. And we've covered about every possible option. The option we come up to is we think they need another warm body. They need somebody that's in between your customer service type individual and someone at your CSR levels. And this is someone that can also get cross-trained on these other products in terms of payroll, accounts payable, inquiry, and provide a massive amount of backfilling in the HR. I asked them to formulate a job description, which they've done, and they've included it in your packet. And so one of the items we proposed to do is with the reorganization of the police department, we will take those savings and we'll help offset or buy down some of helping the finance department get enough hands on deck to manage what they're doing. I've witnessed it personally. I think it's what they need. You really are probably at the risk of burning some folks out if we don't get a solution. At this point, I'll invite Amy and Linda. You can talk to this to the extent that you've got ideas that I haven't already stated.
No new ideas, but this person would be able to take over the, more of the human resources side of the assistant finance director and allow the assistant finance director to do more of the information technology that we need.
Which has really morphed into nearly a full-time gig for Amy. God bless her. I mean, the conference room has turned into a perpetual second office as we've been triaging this, and I'm really reluctant to go the next step with the customer utility meter portal because we're probably stressed as far as we can get.
Who made this purchase?
The finance department. They picked it out as what the citizens and folks needed.
They weren't informed about the extra work that was going to be involved in this thing?
I don't know. I think they had high hopes that it would be different. I mean, I think everything we've encountered is making these services available to folks comes at the need to coordinate those services. Rolling out electronic timekeeping to the departments, meaning that suddenly the finance department is having to backtrack and account for and audit all of those records and help the departments key it in. It may be better in a few years when they get better at it, but I don't see a change, especially as we're getting ready to go to, you can access your water meter with your phone, and you can make a customer service inquiry direct to those, you know, who you might want, to where they'll configure leak alerts, over-usage alerts, payment due alerts, you know, any number of things. And this doesn't even include the demand that COVID's put on them in terms of managing that other side of that workflow. Amy, what are some of the things that we're having to do that we just simply didn't expect?
Well, for example, like you were speaking of a new electronic timekeeping system, that has now outreached all employees. With that, you have to troubleshoot any employee has any issues with the new software.
We're getting a fan noise or something similar?
Is that better?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, train and train new employees. And at this stage, we've only migrated our financial package, payroll, and our electronic timekeeping system where we still have to bring on our utility billing system, the customer-facing portal that you were speaking of, our tax module, and our cash register system.
Yeah, the larger issue here is they're realizing that doing all of these migrations away from the AS400 legacy system is darn near a full-time job. We've been asking one person to sort of lead it while at the same time keeping all of the other stuff going. And having gone through this type of a rollout on two other occasions, it's not going to happen. You know, we can't roll out complex products like we're talking about and still do, you know, work as normal. Something's got to give. Either, you know, either it's our recruitment, it's our offers, it's our personnel management, it's our HR. As we look to the future, I really think we need to be prepared for, you know, cross-training and staff impacts. But in terms of me asking how I can help this department get solved, this was our best recommendation, and that is, quite frankly, at this point, a warm body. And it will probably take six months before that person becomes entirely effective.
Well, I mean, I've said from the get-go that I've always been shocked that we haven't had somebody overseeing the HR. I know that Amy and Linda have done a phenomenal job at everything that they do, but in my corporate setting, before going to another employer, HR was pretty strict, and that's their role, is to be that individual that holds the key to payroll, holds the key to employee records, and also any other type of benefit packages, you name it, HR was the key. So I'm in favor of an HR administrator. They can also, you know, do education for staff. They can also keep up with all of the staff vaccinations. They can, I mean, as COVID rolls out, as the flu starts, there's going to be a lot more things that HR needs to be doing. So I don't know, funding-wise, there's nothing in here other than it says a salary employee. I understand the finance side of hiring another person, but it's definitely something that needs to be addressed.
Let me go on to the public work side of what we're proposing with these numbers, and then we can discuss about the whole thing as a lump. What we recommend to you is, there's only two things, two items that we would buy at this mid-year review. We had hoped it would be more. The first is the bucket truck. The second is the asphalt roller. Why those things? The bucket truck, we have rented.
How much are we paying rent on that?
The bucket truck is $2,317.50 a month.
Jeez Louise.
Which we need for Christmas decorations, traffic lights, tree trimming. And so it's basically been rented solid since October. There was a day where Mr. Lee called me and said, hey, we're having trouble with this traffic light. And I called Mr. Schofield, and I said, we've got to go get this light worked. And he said, you know, I really want to wait two days. And I said, why? He said, because it's the end of the month, and I don't want to pay a whole month to go rent a truck for two days. And that was really the sort of the nickel-and-dime discussion they were having. So we're paying $2,300 a month to rent a bucket truck. Why? For some reason, when the town bought its last truck, they bought a used one. They bought a used one from North Carolina, which I personally would never recommend. Anyway, it's, at this point, 21 years old. It's a 1999 model. And it has 88,000 miles on it, which is a considerable amount for municipal use. The engine has lost power, doesn't have enough power to operate the hydraulics. It also has a bad rear main seal. The hydraulic pump has broke down. If you look at replacing the engine and the hydraulic pump on a 21-year-old vehicle, that's why Mr. Schofield has not sunk any more money into it, because you're looking at probably $30,000 to $40,000, depending on what they find. So he said, look, I don't want to sink more money in here. I need to replace this. I agree. I also agree that we need to quit renting the asphalt roller, which is $1,772 a month. But our budget forecast wasn't enough to sort of grab all these things. What I recommend is you only dip into that 150 that we're forecasting, enough for $30,000, call that a lease purchase payment, towards these two essential capital items for the first year. The rest of the money, you're looking at a $50,000 gap between the savings of the police department and the needs of the finance department. You put 50 towards that, and the rest, you, in essence, leave in the general fund until the dust settles, so that come June and July, you have a more truer picture of, are you net cash positive for the year? So out of the budget reforecast, what we propose are a variety of staffing changes, some savings, some expense. That's a total of 50. A lease purchase payment on two essential items of capital for estimated 30. And the remainder is put on hold, and that we start the process of bidding out the window work at the EMS building and bring you that as a budget item in the coming months when we start talking about budget. That's what we've put together. Those are your most pressing needs that I've identified. The police department issue is included because that's a cost savings. Ultimately, that is simply a retitle and re-functioning, but it does help us address our staffing shortage in finance. We've still got all the folks here. If you have any questions, or if you have your own projects you'd like to submit, but that's what we came up with in terms of looking at how to handle a mid-year budget refocus.
How often are we using an asphalt roller? And I can see a bucket truck could be used, you know, very frequently.
When they're putting down asphalt, which they've been paving here recently, they just got off paving, they use the asphalt roller more frequently than you might think. Every time they have a leak, they have to do a street cut, they have to pour asphalt, so they have to have a roller. And it's not so much the rental that's a challenge, it's the downtime sending, you have to send a dump truck and a trailer, you know, up to the rental place to get it. Something they should have had and instead are paying a rather sizable sum, you know, that's two decent mortgage payments to go and rent the equipment. Asphalt roller, you can probably get away with because the plants are going to be shutting down soon until the, you know, the April timeframe. But if we're going to go to market and do a lease arrangement, we might as well snag both of the pieces of equipment.
I thought that thing we bought, asphalt, back then, if you want to back, was the answer to the asphalt.
I think that was a little grinder, wasn't it?
It was a grinder, I think.
Yeah, I think it was, it would, a miller, a small miller. Mr. Schofield, I may be able to call him if need be.
You look at the rental costs for the bucket truck and the asphalt roller, that's just short of $3,500 a month.
Well, I think the bucket truck is a no-brainer, especially if it's $23,000, or excuse me, $2,300 a month.
How long have we had the current bucket truck? I don't mean to interrupt you, Tyler, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
I know it says 21 years old, but how long have we had it?
You've had it when I came here, so over 13 years.
Okay, you've answered my question.
But, I mean, in my opinion, in my opinion only, but if we're paying $2,300 a month for a bucket truck, that math is a little extreme when you can go somewhere and purchase one for, you know, $115.
Okay, pay for it in about five years, yeah.
Yeah, the asphalt rollers also, you know, the reason we've included it is its rental ratio is extremely high. It's only $16,000 product, but they won't rent them to you except for $1,700 a month. So every month, you're paying a tenth of the purchase price.
Right.
So that's why we said, hey, let's just get them both on lease purchase.
What did you say the cost of the roller was?
The roller and Mr. Schofield's capital submittal is $16,024. So a monthly rental is a tenth of its cost.
Has anybody investigated on what it's going to cost to get this bucket truck fixed?
Yeah, we've had Mr. Tatum look at it, which is why they did not. The, you know, a crate engine, you're looking at in the range of 10 to 15, depending on what's needed, $7,000 for a new hydraulic pump, and then there's the question of a transmission with a PTO, which we estimate out at $5,000, but at that point, you've still got a 21-year-old vehicle. So you're, you know, 60-ish plus or minus, depending on what you find. The hydraulic pumps we can buy now require a PTO off of the transmission, which, you know, folks with farm experience are familiar with. What that truck has does not have that, so it necessitates a transmission replacement. But I think Mr. Schofield was right not to pour more money into that 21-year-old vehicle.
Well, hydraulics being, I mean, that's the most important part of that, because if that fails, then you've got a catastrophe on your hands.
Right.
Well, you've also got a risk. I mean, it's got to work and pass inspection, it's a highly scrutinized OSHA item.
Is the price of the bucket truck 115 or 175?
It's 115. What was in my write-up, the seven is a typo.
It's definitely something they would use a lot.
Yeah, $2,300 a month, $27,000, shy $28,000 a year, I'm just going to pay for something in five years, six years.
Right.
Yeah, you're making the easily, within five or six months, a lease purchase payment, which we can get at great advantage. I mean, you saw recently with our police vehicles, we get amazing rates. You've got-
So you propose, and then we lease, do a lease purchase agreement or arrangement on both of these?
Yeah, we have access to really cheap capital paper, so we would ask VML VCO Finance to give us a proposal to fund these two purchases, and they turn it around pretty quick. Asphalt roller, you could write a check for if you wanted to. You've got that cash flow in the reforecast, but if we're going to market for the bucket truck, I propose you just include the roller, because we don't know what's going to happen between now and June, we don't know what your cash receipts are really going to be like. We think we pegged it right, but preserving your options doesn't hurt.
Well, if you project that this, the new lift truck would, bucket truck would last 20 years, you know, pay it off over 20 years, you spread it out, you wouldn't spread it out that long, but it's got a much more longer life.
Yes, sir.
If we're buying it new versus the one we bought, you say, I think it's 13 to 14 years old?
The one we've, the one we had, we've had over 14 years, and it's a 99, so it's currently 21 years old, and we got, you know, it's got 20 years of life. I don't know that we'll be able to go out longer than 10 on a piece of rolling stock.
And I'm not proposing that, I'm just saying that, you know, it's going to last a lot longer than it will take to pay it off.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Yeah.
Pay it off for what, five years?
That would be likely, you know.
Pay it off in five years, and you've got at least another 10 to 15 years' worth of life out of it, so.
That's the hope. Main thing is to have something for emergencies, to be able to do work as normal. There's also a certain unease with the gentleman operating a piece of rented equipment. You don't want to damage it, you don't want to abuse it, you know, they're somewhat nervous, they're also-
They ought to have that for town equipment, not just rental equipment.
Well, they do generally, but they also, you know, when you've got a sewer line break, you've got to be willing to take that backhoe into that, you know, into that thing. You tend to be a little gun-shy. But that's it, in a nutshell, we're willing to, we can forecast up $150,000. We're bringing you two hard purchases. We recommend you go lease purchase on them, so that we preserve our physical options. If you want to purchase the asphalt roller straight out, that can easily come off of that revenue forecast. We've got one staffing change, which is savings, that will help us hire local folks, and we've got another staffing change, which is an expense, but we're taking it out of this forecast, which we believe will help your finance department stay functional. And, you know, quite frankly, from talking to them, they're on the verge of collapse, just like everybody else. They're desperately looking for some warm bodies to help.
What we're going to do with the truck that we've got now?
We have been selling all of our surplus on an approved auction site, govdeals.com. The staff at community development have moved every single one of them. You may remember, we got a break on the purchase of the police vehicles because they had sold some vehicles. I don't know if Mr. Moore knows how much that was, but, you know, it was certainly measurable. This thing, a 1999 F-350, similar with the V-10, you might get $4,000 for it, plus or minus, just someone looking for parts. But it has that notorious V-10, gas V-10 in it. Make a hot rod. I saw, I saw the light bulb go off.
One thing bothers me is in the last couple of years, it looks like every time you turn around, we've got this emergency, something's broke down, and they weren't fixing, then we've got to buy a new one, and I don't know what the new stuff we bought for the maintenance department in the last couple of years. It looks like everything down there is new, except the bucket truck. And we made out all this time without a roller, I don't know why we can't continue to make out without it for a while. We almost had asphalt work done around here anyway, other than patch stuff. Certainly a bucket truck we can use right now all the time, the weather's getting cooler. Roller, we could hold off until budget time rolls up and take a look at that then.
So what do they do in the winter time if the line breaks and they have to cut the asphalt?
If they can get some sort of a patch, they put it in, but frequently, they'll take out a jumping jack and pack a crush and run, and then they'll put a cold patch on it, and they just have to come back when the plant opens up and patch it permanently. But sometimes the plants will open up on a warm February day, we'll get a notice, and we'll go out and get a load.
James Brown is here in the conference room now, if there's any questions for him.
All right, has he heard how I've described his needs?
No, sir.
Okay.
I just walked in.
What, I guess, Brian, the issue is, what's more pressing need, a bucket truck or an asphalt roller?
What's more pressing, bucket truck or asphalt?
The bucket truck. We use that for our stoplights and trees and everything else. We use that on a weekly basis.
I say we hold off on the concrete or asphalt paver thing and just go with the bucket truck for now.
Is that a motion?
Well, you want to consider them all at once?
No.
Separate.
Yeah. Is that a motion, Tyler?
Yeah.
Let's have a motion to go ahead with the purchase of a bucket truck, and we'll defer the asphalt roller to budget deliberations this spring.
And try not to rent them if we don't have to.
I'll second Mr. Lee's motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries.
All right, Joe, the two proposed items, do you want to take those up? Your police department is proposing simply titling changes, it's a net savings of $22,000, and your finance department is asking for a warm body to help with their HR needs while their principal HR folks are rolling out this new product.
I think the police, all they're doing is, Mr. Stock had pointed out, is reclassifying, had a savings of $22,000, so I think there's really no problem with doing that, especially if it helps keep internal people here.
You mean, I entertain a motion that we move forward with the lease department's request.
Like, have a motion and a second. We move forward with the restructuring of the police department as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor of, I'm sorry? I think we could take care of that six months from now as well as we can now. Okay. Just because you've got a lieutenant that's not available anymore, doesn't mean you've got to replace him right away. Not replacing a lieutenant, though, are we?
No, sir.
Doing away with it. Well, not, we're doing away with it.
Lieutenant's altogether.
On any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Motion carries. Third item is individual in finance department.
Right, if you're going to garner some savings with the restructuring of the PD, it is our request that we ease some of the workload and stress that's been going on, especially some of the COVID-related accounting issues by adding this mid-tier position in the finance department. And especially as we look down the pipe to staffing changes that may come in the future, aggressive cross-training and the ability to have multiple folks that we can rely on is really essential.
So we don't have any money figures tied to this. Obviously, benefit package is a big deal.
Yes, sir.
Whenever it comes to hiring a new individual, but that's something that we can talk about later, I suppose, but I think that should be a key topic whenever we talk about this position. Because personally, 22K is not going to be able to get a good HR administrator.
Oh, gosh, no.
Those positions come with master's level of education. Job experience is key. Personally think that the job, or, excuse me, yeah, job description here can use a little bit of love, but I think it's good for what it is, but-
No salary projection with this right now.
The agenda item says 50 to 70, including fringes, but it really depends on once you go to market and start seeing where folks come in.
Well, I'd like to concrete that figure in a little bit better. I mean, you've got to understand here, when we're, and again, I'm all for restructuring the police department, but when we're moving someone, we're getting rid of a salaried position and going to hourly, the overtime is going to, the overtime's going to bite into that $22,000 that we're getting hung up on here. And, I mean, I'm just discounting that figure altogether.
I am, too.
Okay? So that's what I'm thinking here. Now, as far as this job description, I'm uncomfortable until we put some figures to it. You know, creating something without knowing the full, well, without knowing a huge number here. The very big question is, well, how much? How much are we talking about?
And I think, and I think to Mr. Moyer's point with the PD, in April, we will have a new person in charge. And by in charge, I mean in charge of personnel. So that being said, will he or she come in and potentially have a more insight on an HR perspective, or?
Would if you direct them to begin a recruitment process so they can see what's available and out there and the costs, and that they have to come back to you before anything happens?
Still like to have some parameters on cost.
Well, that's what's spelled out in the agenda item, is, you know, we're proposing 50, then by the time you add fringes, you're at 70. But it would take such a long lead time to go to market and begin looking, there's no reason you can't take this up in January and say, okay, what's this look like? I don't know that you, it would hurt one way or the other. I mean, you can give them a green light to see what the market is and if folks are interested.
You mean, to advertise for interest?
Yeah.
See how you advertise.
I don't think you can advertise until you at least have an idea of some type of figure in place. And we don't have to, I guess, per se, we just need a range. We don't have to lock anybody in.
Let the finance and human services committee take a look at that job description and have you place some parameters on that.
They can. I mean, we've got 50 as a placeholder in the write-up, but I think if you want to have a more intimate conversation with your finance director and your assistant finance director, the finance committee, you can meet with them.
Yeah.
Linda, does that sound plausible?
Where'd you say that number was?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, in the agenda item, it's estimated, you know, we're proposing a base of 50 plus fringes, and I don't know how realistic that is until we go to market.
Depends on how professional a person with backgrounds you want.
Yeah, the very, the very first, you know, last sentence in the finance department description, position salaried approximately $50,000, so you should budget 70, gives you fringes. But I think if you want to meet with the committee and your finance staff, they can go into more detail, and as Mr. Lee said, you can give some good input into the job description, and they can certainly go from there.
I value Ms. Wood's opinion.
Absolutely.
She says, we need it, we need it. We just need to come up with a figure.
All right, we'll carry that last item to the committee to fine-tune the expectations and costs.
All right, then. All right, the other item under old business, there's revised quote for farmer's market expansion.
I believe-
We had a, we did an RFP, we got a couple- We had a, we did an RFP, we got a couple of proposals and then made some alterations in it and that, then that did not cut the cost back as.
No, sir.
The point where we expected it would.
I believe Mr. Moore is going to, to walk us through his business item and ultimately recommend that, that we slow, slow this project down in order to do it right.
Good evening, council members. In November, I brought this to you, the original figures on the farmer's market expansion. It was at that meeting that we referred it to, or you referred it to, the Public Facilities and Special Events Committee, Tyler's Committee. At the end of that week on Fri-, that Friday at the later afternoon, we met on site at the farmer's market to review plans, really just discuss what it looked like. Brian and I laid out with paint what that area looked like. And so that was kind of bantered around some. The consensus from that committee was to get a revised quote, essentially taking out the pergola-type structure there on the corner, on that 90-degree corner, lowering the roof line. And so what we did was we went back to the low contractor, cornerstone general contractors, ask them to revise their quote to see what that number looked like. They did that in a very quick fashion. You have the, the revised quote there. I made a couple of notes, so you would have a quick reference there on that quote. On the right-hand side under, I wrote in the cost savings from the October quote to the current quote. It's a net gain of about $11,500, which is very nominal considering the cost of the initial quote was 287, almost $288,000. So the, the biggest change there was framing, roofing and gutters. That's, those are the only three numbers that changed in the, in the quote that you have in your board, in your, in your council packet. Having said all that and considering the nominal reduction in the cost of that facility, it's, it's a, it's more of a want than a need necessarily. Staff recommends that we hit pause, reject these design-build quote that we got, go back to Thompson and Litten or hire a firm to, to plan this new addition out and then take that, those drawings, put it back out on the street to see where our bids are. And that also gives us time to get further, further along in the, in the fiscal year, see where we sit, potentially look at this as a project going into FY '22. So that's, that is staff recom, staff's recommendation is to, is to deny the bids or reject the bids, the current bid, design-build bid, and instruct staff to do some work with design with the intention of going back out to bid later on in 2021.
And no, no actions required unless you, you want us to revisit these bids, but it was our mutual opinion based on looking at it that the design-build solution as it related to the farmer's market, it, it really didn't pay and it would be better for us to slow this down so that we could talk to the surrounding property owners, talk to the market vendors, be sure we got our money's worth.
I think we pretty much decided on that when we got those original bids, that they were just so outrageous and then the ass submitted a revision and it didn't go down a whole lot. I think that putting it off and, you know, addressing it as we go forward into next year is probably, is definitely the thing to do. Excuse me.
Now, with, with some of this money that we have talked about with the proposed farmer's market, would we be opposed to potentially tasking the EDA and, and saying, push some of that money towards the EDA and, and give them more incentives to potentially go out and recruit and/or come up with ideas to bring back to council?
Well, there's, there's two things to factor into that. One, you're largely looking at a fund balance project. Two, the EDA is always empowered to go negotiate prospects and ideas and to bring you proposals. In fact, you know, your, your yes ratio to no ratio is probably 75%, which most things they bring to you, you generally say, yeah, let's do that. There's, there's never a limit to it. If you do intend on picking this up as an expense, either the next fiscal year or the year after, you know, we, we still want to manage where we are. One thing I would encourage you to do is in conversations with your finance directors, you really want to see what, what the end June 30th brings and just how we finish the year. We're still very eager to have a net positive year. The CARES Act funds has really helped with that because we were able to get some of our law enforcement expenses returned to us. But it's still to the point where moving this thing off into the future probably helps our, our, our balance sheet for the year.
I would agree.
Aren't any questions? I will tell Mr. Moore to move on to the next item if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
There's no other old business item.
That takes, that takes us to.
New business.
Yeah, new business and.
First times of view, consideration for state holiday adoption for the town of Rocky Mount?
I'll, I'll go over the high points and I've got your assistant finance director to, to cover any specifics. In a nutshell, this is December, we're getting ready to roll into a new year. The question comes up every year, do you want to follow the state holiday system or do you want to follow the town's holiday system? What we find is, is our holiday system is so different from the states. Invariably, I end up doing a telephone call, hey, the state's doing this, do you want to do it? And so far, council has, has almost 100% unanimously said, day by day, we will follow the state schedule, sometimes begrudgingly, sometimes frustratingly. But the core question is, is do you want to eliminate that question once and for all? Much like we once and for all eliminated the question of, you know, will we provide the farmer's market free of charge? The answer is no. Do you want to jump on board? Franklin County did this some time ago, it seemed to work. Other localities have done the same, so they're not having this complex issue of are, are we following what the state does? Beyond that, there, you know, there's one day which we're open and which the state has closed, there's days where the, the state has closed and frequently the, the town says, well, I guess we'll go ahead and close. From a, from a planning standpoint, if you're going to close on those days, let's let the staff know so they can plan to be with their families or travel. Waiting until the day before to say, okay, we'll, we'll close on this day that the governor said we're going to close. I think you'd help morale if you said, yeah, we're going to be closed on those days and you can go ahead and make plans around it. And it would actually help departments that have to be mission-ready water, wastewater, sewer, police to know how to plan their manpower versus getting a surprise closure the day before. So on the eve of your 2021, the question is, is, is would you like to follow the state schedule and allow your departments to plan for that? Or do you want us to do what we've been doing, which is, hey, state's closed, do you want to close? For simplicity and management's sake, I think your staff would like to know, well, this is what we can plan on. Do I agree with all the state scheduling choices? No, I don't. I personally would do it differently, but I'm not the governor. Amy, you're, you're here. How many times have you contacted me this year and said, are we closing?
I believe three times.
And did we close each time?
I believe at least two of them, I know we did, Juneteenth and Election Day.
Yeah, and the other time was the, the piece that the state gave before Thanksgiving and I was, I was so tired of pushing that card, I said, let's just bring this up in December.
We have had that in the past, though.
Correct. It, it changes. So before we roll into January, my question for, for council is, do you want to simply do that this year and, and cut that off? Because it is likely, as we approach these days, the, the town will probably want to follow the state's suit, but our folks will not have had the advantage of planning to do certain things, to go to special events, et cetera.
Well, I have, I have a question. Why do we have the, the eight hours and the eight hours and the four hours that's vacation paid? On June 19th and the 25th, November 25th and December the 24th? Why do we have those?
December 24th is Christmas Eve. The June Day is what the state gave off as Juneteenth. The 25th is the day before Thanksgiving, the governor declared and gave a partial day. Those don't have names, they don't have names on the holiday, the government, the state holiday schedule.
Well, and then maybe I'm, I'm not understanding, but the, the 24th of December, we normally give off.
Yes, sir. So there, there's no change between that and the state schedule.
Well, according to 20, the, the 25th, this, the state is off.
Yes, sir, Christmas, the state of Virginia and the town of Rocky Mount will be closed on the 25th.
Well, well.
I think his question is, is this is circled in blue versus the black circle? Am I right, Mr. Grundoff?
Well, it'll, it'll be eight hours additional holiday time.
Right, because if you look at the 25th, that is a holiday. That is Christmas. Now, Christmas Eve isn't a real holiday, but the governor, like the town of Rocky Mount, has given an additional eight hours.
We'll get that day off anyway.
Right, so we would call that Christmas Eve, but the state calls that an additional eight hours for your Christmas. And that's what you get at Thanksgiving and that's what you get at the Christmas Eve. Because the actual day in next year, Thanksgiving, will be on November 26. Christmas will be on the 25th. And the town and the state are going to give the 24th off. And so the state denotes it on this rather complex sheet that has been submitted as eight hours of holiday time. They don't call it Christmas Eve.
I don't see where there's a conflict. Well, the county offices is closed and the town offices is open. Most people's dealing with the town living town and they're not going up to the county and dealing with them. And then again, it's, it's three extra holidays. What's, what's it going to cost the town?
$30,000.
Three extra days for all employees, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, the core question is, is do you want what we're currently done or do you want to, starting out, say, these will be holidays we're going to take? Because, you know, we, we will be asked, do we wish to follow suit when we approach Election Day? We will be asked, do we want to follow suit when we approach these other events? I do not have any trouble at all calling, but my experience has been the day before the town decides to follow the state schedule. And if that's the plan to go ahead and follow that schedule as we've done for the last several years, let's indicate so that we're going to do it in January so that folks can plan versus doing it the day before. And each of these we've come up with this year, as well as the year before and the year before, it's always been a day before decision, oh yeah, we will, we'll go ahead and do that. I mean, it's entirely council's call. This is a good December item to bring up and for reasons of consistency, which is why other localities have adopted this. Have no trouble if, if you wish to continue calling on the eve of these days and gaining council's input. But since in my experience, you've statistically said, yes, we want to follow the schedule, I'm simply giving it to you in advance of January 1.
James, these three additional holidays, the governor is, we're setting a state, state holiday schedule before December 31st. The governor's given three additional holidays during the year, June 19th, the day before Thanksgiving, and then the day before, well, obviously Christmas Eve. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
He has made a determination after the official schedule is set.
Correct.
So there are 13 paid holidays, state holidays in the calendar year for 2020.
Correct.
So we'll have 2021, which I fully support that we follow the, that we follow the state guidelines.
Right, everything that says additional is the governor has penciled them in, they would result in me calling you, do you want to follow that? Some of them overlap what we're already doing, like Christmas Eve. But what we're proposing is you simply adopt the state calendar for your holidays and it comes out well enough in advance that folks can plan and, and use it accordingly. Now, of, of note here, the governor has declared Juneteenth a holiday as well as Election Day and those, he's telling you ahead of time. And so the short question is, is, shall we follow the schedule? And since we did this last year, if you care to, you can simply adopt the schedule presented before you.
We're talking about 2021 only. We can revisit this again if need be.
Yeah, as often as you care to. I mean, and, and my, my experience in terms of, of calling to say, do you want to follow what the governor's doing, council has by and large always done so. So I'm, I'm trying to make this a little more efficient by saying, hey, here's all of this packaged together in one year, do we, you know, should we just adopt this as our holiday schedule?
Right, and, and again, I get the family planning, I, I totally get that. So again, I, gentlemen, I support that.
Is that a motion?
I, that certainly, yes, that will be a motion to adopt that.
Have a motion to adopt the state holiday schedule for 2021? Is there a second?
Second.
Then a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Motion carries. All right, next, review and consideration for games of skill.
Mr. Moore.
So the state of Virginia earlier this year was set to ban games of skill. Big, big linchpin in all that was its effect on the Virginia Lottery and the trickle-down into the education system in Virginia. Then COVID hit and that changed their thoughts on that. And so what happened on the state level was they decided to wait on that ban, tax them, tax the machines and have them enforce and registered and enforced through the ABC Department. So what they did was they set July 7th as the deadline for all gaming machines to be registered in Virginia. After that, it, they essentially set a moratorium on them until they bring it up again in the General Assembly next budget year, so early part of 2021. The, the town has 19 machines registered through ABC. They have very nominal revenues coming back in the amount of, well, in the percentage of 12%. The fees that are paid to the state are about $1,200 per machine per month, so. are about $1,200 per machine per month. So these machines are expensive to whoever is whoever's running them or has them in their in their facility. So in lieu of making changes to our planning and zoning codes with regards to these games of skill, myself and Jessica Heckman, the town planner, have done some research in localities in our area, kind of benchmarking and then doing some also some research on this games of skill as well. In lieu of of going in and changing planning and zoning code with the governor set to ban them going into next year, it's our recommendation that we sit tight as a town. That is what other jurisdictions, other localities have done as well. They want to wait and see what the state will do. If the state takes this on, which, you know, all indications are right now that they will take it on again and indeed ban them going into FYI 22, we hold tight, let's see what they do and not make any changes to our code until after we see what the state does.
That makes sense.
Yeah, a lot of you have been asking about this. It's been a very hot issue. I believe Mr. Moore's department has gotten up to speed and they're going to watch it carefully in Richmond. And if it if it turns out that state solutions to this issue aren't going to present themselves, he'll quickly bring something to the table that we can act on.
Okay, thank you. Next items, the town of Rocky Mount COVID-19 municipal utility relief program.
The next two items can be discussed and considered together because they are are functionally the same. I'll give you the high points and your finance director can answer any specific questions you have. The state has offered a utility relief program for those who have had a COVID impact. It's really very similar to the the safe program that the town implemented. They asked us to submit how much in arrears we had in the 60-day arrears for our utilities. Your finance director gave them a figure of $19,372. In essence, the state has offered $16,781 to cover that arrears, which means we we give them sort of a discount, if you will. Given that many of these customers would simply ultimately be cutoffs and write-offs, this is a good thing for the town as well as a good thing for the customers because it it pays their bill and gets them current. So the next two documents you have are the documents that implement that. The first is a a program wherein an individual would apply for relief under the state program. And the second is an agreement with Franklin County that I've already executed with the county administrator, a certification form, because the state of Virginia asks that counties be the fiscal agent for this program. And so they have asked us to work through Franklin County. So our current plan is to submit our 60-day arrears to the state for the COVID relief program to require that the customers that have a 60-day aged balance fill out the the assertion form and return those to the state, who will then send those funds to the town of Rocky Mount through Franklin County because they do not work with towns, they work with cities and counties. We've executed this at the staff position because it is a fairly straightforward approach. But prior to sending it off, I wanted to be sure council had no objections with the process. Ms. Whitty, did I did I cover the high points?
We did. Yes. Also, too, these are the arrears through December 31st. That came last late last week and we have until January 29th to submit these applications from the customers and to get our funding.
The customer intake form that we have here asks to indicate the applicable cause of economic hardship. Do we require any proof of that?
According to the Department of Housing and Community Development, which is administering the program, we can ask questions, but we have to take them at their word. The form came from the Department of Housing and Community Development in theirs and they do have to check one of the boxes as to how COVID affected them.
So in essence, go ahead, Linda.
Since there's such a short turnaround time, we will probably end up calling our customers to get them to come by and sign it or authorize us to sign it for them.
So in short, the state is willing to pay 87 cents on the dollar to clear customers' arrears if they have had a COVID impact to their income?
Yes. They want us to prioritize 60-day overages, I mean, sorry, 60-day arrears. And then if we still have funds left over, we can apply it to 30 days.
Now, given given that we we bring you a write-off once a year and that write-off is is similar to this, you know, I think it's a good return and also think it's a good program to offer folks. We we sort of get lost in in the hard work of what we're doing, but there's still a lot of folks out there that are struggling with with the pandemic. It struck close to home and we know what it would be like if you were the sole breadwinner and you had to deal with that and be out a couple of weeks. Or if you had an exposure and your employer made you go stay home for that period of time, we we at least like to offer this out. So we would like council's blessing for the town to participate in the state-sponsored utility relief program.
Do you need a motion to that extent to accept the money?
Yes, sir. I to to certify or approve of, I would appreciate a motion from council that codifies the certification of receipt of coronavirus relief fund payments that me and Mr. Whitlow have already completed so that should we turn in a request for funds, that it is shown that the town council approves of us making that request.
I make a motion to receive these funds from the state to the county that then in return come to us.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, next item under new business review consideration, Virginia Tourism Corporation grant.
That would be Mr. Mr. Moore in place of Ms. Sims.
Yes, so Beth Sims, Economic Development Director, has went out and we have received a $10,000 grant from Virginia Tourism Corporation. It is a reimbursable grant that is used for for COVID-related recovery and and bringing it back tourists and tourism into communities that were hurt during the COVID, during our current COVID pandemic. The region as a whole received $60,000 with the town receiving 10,000 of that. So the request tonight is to approve of these funds and appropriate them into the town budget for use.
Like all of your grant awards, staff cannot access those funds. They cannot spend them unless appropriated by council. You do a major appropriation when you approve the budget, but any new funds that come in have to be appropriated. So in order in order to add these funds to our branding initiative, staff submits to you an appropriation resolution, adding $10,000 to our branding line item and creating a revenue line item that is a tourism grant in an offsetting amount.
Which must be used for that stated purpose.
Correct. Yes, sir. Yeah, we we can't buy an asphalt roller.
Right.
Yeah, all right. So I make the motion and congratulate Mark and Beth for the hard work in the tourism section. Keep getting grant money. That is free money. I am huge fans of grant writers. So good job. And I make the motion to appropriate those funds properly.
Certainly, because.
Second.
Mike, you have a motion and a second. Certainly, if we don't apply for that grant money, somebody else can get it.
Yep. Keep writing grants.
Exactly. All right, have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, last item under new business, town of Rocky Mount Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and APA Transmittals Delays.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. State Code 15 dot 2 dash 2511 says that your your finance director must give you due notice if they are not going to make the deadline of December 15th for your comprehensive annual financial report and the APA transmittals. You are getting that due notice from your finance director at this point and she has given you a an estimated date in which those transmittals will occur. Her reasoning for this is the burdens of the software rollout, the shorthandedness of staff, as well as the COVID-19 pandemic. Every time we turn around, they're getting some some new product or the auditors are saying they can't come on site because they've had an exposure. I believe this is normal and in keeping with the year. But if you have questions about this notice, your finance director can answer them.
I'm sure we're not the only locality that's having to deal with this either, are we, Linda?
I'm I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Said, I'm sure we're not the only locality that's having to deal with this as well.
No, we are not.
But it's it's our intent to, when the auditors do complete their work and we have the work, the the working papers that they need to continue and stay on track because we've got to have this essential as we go into our budget preparation process. But we, you know, unfortunately, at this point, you have the written notice that that we do not have the the transmittals ready. And to the extent we can get them ready, we will we will do so.
But this this says that pending, or excuse me.
Estimated.
Estimated is March 31st, 2021. So one would suspect that these will be done by your departure?
You've got to have them done.
Depending on when your departure?
You can't you you can't go much past that and still have it impact your budget discussions.
Right.
I'm hoping we see something in February.
Me too. Okay, cool deal.
Of course, that's, like you said, an estimated date.
Correct.
Could be done prior to that as well.
Right. Yeah, it really depends on with vaccine rollout, et cetera. You know, we're the the whole concept of field work, virtual meetings, everything has been been all up and up up on end this year.
All right, so it requires no action. Committee reports, we covered that.
Yes, sir.
Here in old business. So move to other matters and concerns.
Mr. Moore and Ms. Sims, we're on rising side.
Oh, nice. Very good. All right, we do have one item under closed session under section 2.23711A.1, discussion consideration, interviews with affected candidates through the town manager's office. Do I have a motion to go into closed session under decided code?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries.
Chief, I'll need you to join us for the first one and you can take Rebecca's plate.
Watch this streaming. We appreciate your interest. Again, we'll be streaming next month as well and we're still subject to governor's orders for crowd sizes. So hopefully in February, we'll be able to have people in attendance. So appreciate your interest. Hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.